Evening. I'd like to welcome you on call to order the February 25th Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That sounds pretty cool when there's a roomful of people in here. We don't get that very often. So, good to see all of you here. First responders from the fire department, too. It was great to see everybody here tonight. So, we are to the approval of our agenda. Are there any additions or subtractions to this evening's agenda? If not, entertain a motion. Councilmember Claussen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as published. Any further discussion of the evening's agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. We are to our first citizen comment period, and it is for any item on this evening's agenda. We have a second citizens' comment period at the end for any items. Is anyone wishing to address the council for anything on this evening's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the first citizen comment period. We are to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Rosa Pepe. Further discussion of the consent agenda? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We have two presentations tonight. We're gonna do a drinking water test after we give out a few employee recognitions. So, Chief Brown, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. As you know, our department does the best that we can to recognize the public safety officers that we have and the men and women of your department, and we have some special awards tonight. So, I'm just gonna go ahead and start off because we've got four of them, and I know your time is valuable. So, if I could have Sergeant Maine come up and join me? That was not your phone? Okay, good. As you know from her impassioned pleas in front of this council in the past, Sergeant Maine has deep roots in this community. She's been a resident of Port Orchard for 45 years. She graduated from South Kitsap High School and still maintains the record for the 100-meter hurdles. She's also been a member of our agency for 10 years, and she was Port Orchard Police Department's first female sergeant. Her commitment to this community runs even deeper than just serving as a peace officer. Sergeant Maine is the past president of the South Kitsap Southern Little League and has performed as a Little League umpire and Pee-wee baseball coach. But most impressive is that she currently donates her time to be a mentor for an inmate at the Women's Correctional Center in Purdy, and that alone shows the servant's heart that she possesses. Every year, and in nearly every community, local papers run a best-of competition that covers everything from the best bagel to the best hairdresser. Kitsap Daily News is no different and also includes the category of best police officer. Without being given a pre-selected list, community members write in the names of those who have positively affected their lives. Sergeant Maine's servant heart touched enough of our community that she was overwhelmingly selected as the best police officer for 2019. It's also important to note, this is the second time in three years that she has won this award. So, this is an impressive achievement for many reasons, but the most important to me is that this reflects what her team already knows. She's amongst the best of us, and she's committed to raising our community to be amongst the best as well. Thank you, Ed. Moving on to continued deep comments. We see her heart every day and know that to serve also causes all of us to carry that same weight. Sergeant Maine is our gold standard for managing that challenge, and for that, I thank you. Unless you wanted to give up another compassion speech or... Nope, you're good? Okay. Yeah. Alright, so we're gonna move on to our second award. So, in keeping with our mission and vision, the city of Port Orchard and the Port Orchard Police Department recognize Detective Andrew Brandon as our Officer of the Year for his outstanding effort in 2018. So, if you want to join me. You can say it however you'd like. For much of 2019, Detective Brandon was the sole member of the investigation unit. For an agency of our size and tempo, this alone is a tremendous undertaking. In the last year, he has brought a successful conclusion to cases ranging from a detailed bombing threat at the high school to a burglary and assault case that required lengthy warrants and out-of-state extraditions. Our partners in the various regional, state, and federal agencies have all expressed their gratitude for his engagement, skill, and willingness to collaborate. In addition to his duties as a detective, Detective Brandon serves as our agency's range master and the sole firearms instructor. This responsibility includes keeping all members of our team current with their training and qualifications on each weapon system, developing the training and curriculum, and ensuring that all of our equipment and supplies are ordered, maintained, and available when needed. Detective Brandon is also a member of the unit's Marine Patrol, and he has been an essential piece of the unit's capability in search and rescue, voter outreach, and community education. He's taken the lead in addressing issues related to the abandoned and derelict vessels that litter our waterways. Vessels that sink and leak fuels and other toxic chemicals have lasting effects on our fragile marine ecosystem, and in 2019, Detective Brandon was responsible for the removal of numerous vessels from Sinclair inlet. Your drive, your energy, and commitment to this team truly embody our department's core values of service, honor, and integrity. So, thank you, and we look forward to many, many more. And finally, tonight, we have two life-saving medals. So, if I could have Officer Stephen Morrison and Bill Shibley come up and join me. So, we already spoke about this event that occurred in December, and I wanted to thank Lieutenant Van Geesten, who is the one who actually put both of these officers in for this award. But it's important to us that we truly recognize these type of things that have a deep, deep impact in our community. So, again, in keeping with our mission and values, the city of Port Orchard and the Port Orchard Police Department recognize Officer Stephen Morrison and Officer William Shibley for their outstanding efforts in December of 2019. On Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, around 1:10 p.m., Officer Morrison and Officer Shibley responded to the Kitsap County Correctional Facility for an unwanted person. Upon their arrival, the officers found an unresponsive and unconscious male on a bench within the jail. The officers moved the man to the floor and assessed that he might be suffering from a possible overdose. Officer Morrison and Officer Shibley ultimately administered two doses of the medication Narcan. By the time aid arrived, the man was responsive and conscious. The valiant efforts of these two officers that day resulted in the saving of a human life. A failure to correctly assess or to act could have led to a tragic outcome. And that day, these two officers acted upon our values of service, honor, and integrity. Therefore, the actions of Officer Morrison and Officer Shibley qualify them for this life-saving award and bestows upon them the appreciation of the city and this department. So, thank you, gentlemen. And one more thing to note. Again, in keeping with our values and recognizing that the strength that our men and women of this department have, this is actually Officer Morrison's second life-saving award, and I want to make sure that he's recognized publicly for that as well. Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, chief, for sharing. It's great to make those recognitions this evening. So, this time, Jackie Brown is here, and she's gonna tell us about a drinking water contest, and we have at least four sources of water in our city, and you're gonna get a chance to pick which of those sources gets submitted to the contest. So, Jackie.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. In the interest of time, I think I'm gonna bring out the first sample so you can be drinking that and testing it while I'm giving you the background.
So, we're doing this now so that she has time to tabulate the results while we do the rest of our business, so at the end of the council meeting, we know which one of our wells we like best. And I'm gonna send a message to our, to the fire chief real quickly to thanking him for his personnel being here tonight.
Is that vodka? Well, that's a lot. Is that A or is that four?
You don't have to drink at all. Okay, so you have some scoring sheets in front of you. You should each have a scoring sheet. You should each have some oyster crackers to cleanse your palate before you start, and in between each sample. Then, there's a scoring sheet, and the large sheet that you have gives you some criteria on which to score. A little bit of background, the American Water Works Association has an annual taste test each year in June at their annual conference. In order to qualify to enter your water into that contest, you have to win at the regional level. Our regional section is called the Pacific Northwest Section. It's Washington, Oregon, and most of Idaho. In order to be eligible to compete there, you have to win at the local level. Our local level is the South Sound subsection, which is Pierce, Mason, Thurston, Kitsap, Grace Harbor, and most of Pacific County. That test is in March. Because we have several sources in the city of Port Orchard, and the way our system is configured, we can pretty much, they're kind of compartmentalized, we thought, well, let's have council decide which source to enter since we can only enter one. And I will, as a side note, tell you that the system that I retired from a couple of years ago wins this every year, and I really wanna beat 'em, so. The actual sources of the water are a big secret, and I have it in my pocket, and only me and the person who pulled the samples knows, so.
The second one smelled like a swimming pool.
Oh, my God, I'm getting blind.
Oh, there's none. Here's D, okay. Oh, there's a lot in D.
I don't know. What's the rating system? One to 10? One to five?
It's on this page.
There's a sheet. There's a sheet, yeah.
No.
It's one to 10.
But it doesn't have it for the odor. Yeah, but you have points for a couple of different categories, so.
I don't have D yet.
It's one to 10 in each area.
No talking? No current notes? Pictures?
We're gonna need a bathroom break about halfway through the night.
I'd do a lot better if this were Scotch.
At least somebody put it out there.
I always liked to believe that it was gonna be vodka.
Can we get a refill on the one we like?
They're all really close.
Oh, no, they're not.
Oh, you don't think?
No.
Good for you. Good for you.
When you finish with your scoring sheet, if you'd let me know, I can pick 'em up, because I have a little, quick little program in the back that'll rate everything, and I'll have an answer in just a couple of minutes, so.
We'll conduct the rest of our business meeting, and we'll ask for those results at the end of the meeting. We don't have many items on the agendas.
I spilt.
Uh-oh.
We knew that would happen.
Did you spill on your scoring sheet?
Should we just leave our other ones up here?
I know.
You have to bring a bib next time.
Always one.
And Jackie, thank you for dinner.
Do you want these scoring sheets back?
Forgot to do the crackers in between. Nuts. Don't need 'em now.
Crackers.
I have extras.
He has personal favorites that he's keeping, so.
I am. And I'm gonna commingle my water. Tell me.
I didn't know that they were allowed to be mixed.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm really glad I don't live in one of the neighborhoods.
That's a little unfair, Mayor.
What?
Having a bottle of water sitting next to you.
They didn't, I wasn't allowed to participate.
Oh, I see.
So, you guys drinking all that water made me thirsty.
At least they recognize you don't get a vote, so.
That's right. I don't have a vote, unless there's a tie. It's tough to do when there's seven of you, though. Is it? I believe that.
Sorry for my delay. Highly recommend this restaurant.
Are we about done? Got a couple more working still? I like your tablet.
I love it. Thank you very much.
I can't wait to love it. I said, "I can't wait to love it."
We'll get you fixed up.
I know.
Alright, we ready to roll?
Yep.
Waiting on what? Missing three? Okay. You gotta turn your homework in. Teacher can't grade it if you doesn't receive it.
Thank you.
Alright, we're back to our business. We're to our business items now. The first is Business Item A, Approval of Ratification of an Interlocal Agreement with Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. Clerk Reinderson.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council. So, as the country's Board, one of the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council Board approved updates to the interlocal agreement. This requires ratification by the members' respective councils or boards. A redlined version of the interlocal agreement has been provided to you, which outlines the changes, which the only changes were to include the port of Kingston, and then to update Section 5 of removing port of Bramerton because they are no longer the only port. So, just those two redline changes were changed. And then, a final version has been provided to you as well. With that, staff recommends the approval of the ratification to the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council Interlocal Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ratification of the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council's interlocal agreement as presented.
Second by councilmember Kuchardi. Any discussion or questions about this? As Clerk Reinderson stated, the port of Kingston has now joined as a member, paying dues to the organization, and as a result, we've been asked to add them to this interlocal agreement, which has to be ratified by all of the member agencies. So, that's why it's before you tonight. So, with that, you'll be voting on the ratification of the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council's interlocal agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to Item B, Approval of a Contract with Laserfish for Records Management and Workflow Software. Mr. Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The city has conducted a review of records management and workflow needs and determined the city would benefit greatly from an enterprise content management software. ECM software enables organizations to save time and money by efficiently managing documents and information. ECM software helps organizations digitize documents and automate document-driven processes, allowing the public and employees access to the documents and information on demand, saving time and money. This software currently utilized by many counties, cities, and other municipal agencies in Washington. The Finance Department briefed the mayor and the council at the January retreat and requested approval to move forward in procuring a new ECM software product. The council supported and directed the mayor and staff to seek a new software. The Finance Department staff reviewed and discussed options and recommend moving forward with Laserfish. The Finance Department recommends approving the purchase of Laserfish to meet the city's growing needs for records management and workflow processes. I did want to add one other commentary note. Councilmember Deener asked me to look at potential cost savings to the city, and while it is very difficult doing this type of analysis, I committed to providing some additional commentary on the value of the product, as it will enable us to gain operational efficiencies and alleviate future demands on staff time in records management and retrieval. So, I briefly asked staff to look at what we did in 2019 as far as records retrieval and come up with an estimate of what that, quantify that, put it in dollars terms. We came up with an estimate of about $30,000 of staff time was used for records retrieval. We also looked at maintaining and archiving, and that would have been about another $40,000 of staff time dedicated to doing those activities. Now, keep in mind, this is just for 2019. So, as we discussed, once we have the software in place and we're no longer creating the paperwork that will require us to do that work because it's gonna be digitized, those will not be staff putting time and resources to those efforts. So, this is a one-time 2019 effort, about $70,000. We would have put the same effort in 2018, 2017, and back. So, the idea is to get the software in place to help us prevent from incurring those costs going forward, and it's really about productivity and better use of staff time, as well as providing better access for the public and employees to documents that we have. The workflow side of it, creating electronic processes that help us to streamline, I did not come up with a number, but that is gonna be an invaluable service that we're gonna gain with Laserfish, and maybe I can report back next year and provide a little more commentary on the things we were able to accomplish and maybe put some cost figures there. But I did want to provide some, as I was asked, to put some dollars to what that savings could look like, and I would put that in the context of productivity, where our staff will now be better utilized doing other higher-value-added things for the city.
Yes, councilmember Rosa Pepe.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for the purchase of Laserfish software in a form acceptable to the city attorney in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Second by councilmember Deener. Councilmember Deener, did you have a question or a statement?
No, I wanted to, you know, I reached out just to hopefully be able to articulate some of what the savings might be. I knew that it would involve maybe some rough guessing and some last-minute scrambling, so I wanted to thank you for pulling staff together to get that number. I think it's important for the public to hear what could be. So, thank you again for doing that.
I think going forward, one of the biggest things is not having to put more resources and hire more staff to manage these records and these processes. So, we're not only gonna save those dollars, but have efficiencies and be able to reallocate the staff time to other needs. As we grow as a city, we just need to be, you know, take advantage of these types of technologies so that we become more efficient in the workflow that we do. Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
No, I know you probably covered this during the retreat, but what is the, is there an annual cost subscription or maintenance cost for Laserfish?
Yeah, we did discuss at the retreat, and the cost figure at the retreat was about $40,000 on an annual basis. After working with our IT network administrator, he felt that we could, rather than go on the cloud with this product, put this on our servers, which would save us about $25,000 per year. So, the annual cost is gonna be about $15,000 to $16,000.
Against the $70,000 cost.
Correct.
It's great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, you'll be voting on Approval of a Contract with Laserfish for Records Management and Workflow Software. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One opposed. Hearing none, the contract has been approved. We are to 7C, Approval of an Agreement with Stanley for City Hall Security Improvements. Mr. Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor. During the mid-banal review, a city hall security upgrade project was discussed and authorized. The council provided a budget of $75,000 for an electronic key card system and cameras to upgrade city hall security. The management team developed a project scope and received proposals for this project. During this process, the team discovered the original scope of the project was significantly more expensive than was approved. As such, the team reworked the scope of the project to become consistent within the budget authority. The management team prioritized the security needs to match the intent of the budget and recommended moving forward with an electronic key card system. An electronic key card system will allow the city to better manage the facilities, employees' access points, as well as provide HR an effective way to onboard and offboard employees. The current hard key system is archaic and requires significant staff time to manage keys, reprogram existing touchpad locks, and incur costs to have doors rekeyed in the event of lost keys. The security cameras will not be part of this first security upgrade phase due to the budget constraints, but could be implemented in future projects. It was important to the management team that the product being purchased be able to be scaled up and added in the future for remote locations and other city facilities. The Finance Department recommends approving the contract with Stanley to acquire software, making building and security improvements, and acquire an electronic door key card system.
Councilwoman Lou Correlli.
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Stanley in a form acceptable to the city attorney not to exceed $80,000.
Second.
Second by councilmember Claussen. So, in the scaled-down version, were access points to the building. So, the double doors won't be key-carded, but there's three different exterior points. So the double doors won't be keycarded, but the, there's three different exterior points for the council members and the staff. And then the police department is a separate entity. None of our keycards will work there. And then individual departments. So we'll be able to isolate individual departments and who comes, who goes, and get away from keys and the keypad that we currently have the touchpads. So Councilmember Roosevelt.
What's the schedule for implementation?
That's a good question.
Once the contract is approved, signed by the mayor, we'll actually work with the vendor, discuss that everything, as it's going to require some electrical work, it's going to impact multiple departments. So we're going to have to put together the phased approached, but I would expect this year it'll be complete.
Thank you.
I would say at least 60 or 90 days, if not longer, because there's wiring that has to be done.
Right. Just curious.
Councilmember Chang.
You answered half of the question by saying the electrical wiring, but what kind of backup is there in the event, the rare event that we lack power? Is there a battery backup for each of the stations or?
Two phases, yeah. One, we have a generator on City Hall, and that should come on. But then, as we heard from the vendor, there is battery backup to it. And then the third redundancy is a few of us will still have keys. We can't completely eliminate keys, but keys are just, keys and locks are expensive to change if a set of keys gets lost. Or, you know, you dismiss someone and aren't able to retrieve keys. So we've got a lot of locks around here, and it's expensive to change those locks at times when we have to. So this is a much better system. We'll be able to, you know, turn a key off or on, or change the parameters when you can get in or out of the building, so.
But the double doors are not?
They will not. They were expensive to retrofit.
So there's still keys.
Yeah, so the, how councilmembers, around to the right of the front doors, there's an entry door there, there'll be a keypad there. And then as you come in, there'll be a keypad getting into Finance. And then here at the top of the stairs, there'll be another keypad. So that's how we'll secure this space. We had, what is it, about 18 points? We had to scale it down to 18 points to get into the, entry points to get into the budget that we could afford, to kind of backed into it.
Am I, am I hearing that we will not enter through the double doors?
After hours, during business hours, we'll unlock the crash bars as we do on most evenings, so, correct. There won't be a FOB or an electronic entry point at this time. You know, when we contemplate future City Hall upgrades, we might make that change, but it's just much more cost-effective to do those other doors. All right, other questions? Okay, you'll be voting on approval of an agreement with Stanley for the City Hall security improvements. Excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The council, the contract has, or agreement has been approved. So we are to 7D, which is the approval of the January 21 council meeting minutes. Let's see who is, and I've got Councilmember Clausen.
That we approve the council meeting minutes of January 21.
Okay. And I have a, those are the work study minutes from January 21, and I have a councilmember Roosevelt seconded. Further discussion of those minutes. All in favor of approving the January 21 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, and I have two abstentions, Councilmember Kuchardi and Councilmember Deener, if I'm not mistaken. To the February 11 council meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the February 11 2020 meeting minutes. Second.
So a motion and a second, discussion of those minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And I have an abstention from Councilmember Clausen, Councilmember Lou Correlli, and Councilmember Roosevelt.
Just one note, there's an error in the reports of council committees. The Utilities Committee was listed as February 19 and was on the agenda as such, but it was really always February 17. I'm just correcting that. Just an error, scribbler's error.
Right.
Another scribbler's error is on the February 11 minutes, it still has me listed as Mayor Porotan.
I noticed that, yes. And both of them.
I'll update that.
It's true. It's no longer the case. All right, thank you for catching those. We have council committee reports, and Finance Committee has not met since our last council meeting. And you need, if you could, maybe we could circle our calendars together this evening and set a date, because we don't have a meeting date set. And Economic Development Tourism, I see they meet March 9. Have they met? Did you meet earlier this week, or was it last week? You're the chair.
We gave the report at the last meeting.
Okay, fair enough.
Our next meeting is March 9.
9th.
Yeah, 9:30.
Perfect. Utility Committee, I see it's March 16.
Yes. It was canceled for February. It's March 16.
And supervisory has not been set. Land Use, I see, is March 2, and I don't believe it's met yet.
Quite some time, and that meeting's at DCD.
Okay, and our Transportation Committee met for the first time this evening, so Councilmember Ashby's the chair. Would you like to give a report?
I would. It was just two hours ago, so we'll see if I can remember. But we did, Chris Hammer, the Assistant City Engineer, put together a very introductory agenda for us, and I believe we all appreciated that a great deal. We saw video that AWC has put out on City Transportation 101. It was a nice little cartoon that we could understand, and so that was good. Then we did a background of the transportation element in our city's comprehensive plan, the vision and the purpose. We spent some time reviewing the city's transportation plan, our street network, our transportation needs, and our six-year transportation improvement plan. We discussed the Bethel Corridor a little bit. We talked about future meetings, but this was really a foundational meeting, and I suspect our first several meetings will be that. They will be informational, instructional, educational to get us started. The committee members were very interested in our, help me, the asset management, the...
Pavement management.
Pavement management, not asset, the pavement management system, and how we can possibly implement getting some of our, you know, side streets and roads in a little better condition. And we also discussed the need to put together some sort of strategic plan for the area of our city south of Tremont, up Sydney, that fireweed flower street area, just to put together a plan to see how we could strategically help those, you know, that neighborhood with a better road system.
South of Flipper.
Yes, yes. Those were some of the major things we talked about, and we will have decided to meet the fourth Tuesday of the month at 5 o'clock before our council meetings.
Thank you for your report. Lodging Tax, have you met?
No, we don't meet till this fall.
Till October, I see that. And Chimes and Lights, I think you met yesterday.
We did, actually, and a new group has applied for the, an event, application for the run.
Yay.
And there was another group also interested in that, and so we're just waiting to hear how this goes. It's going to require a new route, so it's going to need approval with the police and others. We also went over the Decorated Tree Contest, which we're going to be opening soon. Anyone who had a tree this last year in the same planter can put a hold on that this year. Payment will start June 1, and that will actually seal the deal. But we're going to have the trees placed November 2 through the 6, the decorating 7 through the 24, and judging will again take place on November 25. We didn't have enough trees this past year, so we're just going to get started a little bit earlier. We will no longer have tractor rides, but we're looking on, in having some other form of ride, maybe a cart of some sort. We're going to report on that. We're looking for a sponsor for that. And we also see the need for talking to police about some routes. We've run into some difficulties and need to work some things out. We may even bring that to a study session because we're having some issues with that. So the next meeting will be March 16 here at City Hall, and that pretty much sums that up.
Okay, thanks for your report. Outside Agencies, I had Transit Work Study last week, and they unveiled a Park and Ride Study, and there was a number of sites primarily on the west side of 16 that are being looked at, one of which is our dump site. I'm very, I would gladly sell Transit our dump site, even give it to them, but we might have to work out some sort of a lease arrangement where improvements happen to that, and they lease it from us for a nominal fee because nobody seems to want our dump site, so. The other little tidbit, there was, if you, the Transit app is, they've got now a branded app, and it's called, you can go to the App Store and call, it's called Kitsap Transit Tracker. So you can track your bus, your ferry, any of Kitsap Transit modes of travel. So there was a non-proprietary app before, and I just learned about it, that they have their own app now, so just wanted to share that. Housing Kitsap met today, but there isn't anything that I didn't tell you last week about new, you know, the state auditors, and we have our follow-up meeting with them next week, so I'll report back in a couple of weeks on trying to educate them on some of our, how we've improved the cash flow. In particular, what shared with us today, we're, we don't like, you know, we are providing that agency subsidized housing, and we're having to go through an exercise to raise rents for the sustainability of the organization. And currently, we, there are limits to what it can be raised to in various programs depending on how the property was financed, but we're about 25% through the process. You can't change the rents until the leases come due or people move out of the properties, but they've improved cash flow in this last year by $30,000 a month, so pretty significant. So when we're done, it should be north of $100,000 in additional cash flow, which should make the agency sustainable, you know. Doesn't get us to building housing, but it gets us to where we're covering our operations with operations, operational cash.
Well, I have a couple outside agencies if we would like to. One is the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, just to give council a briefing on that, is we're going through a state audit currently. We have never been audited, and the state auditors have figured out that we are a standalone agency and require an audit. So we will have, we're going through that audit process right now. In subsequent years, as long as we have a clean audit, then we just do a, we fill out, we self-audit and fill out a report. But the initial audit is about $7,000 to us. So that's ongoing right now. This is also a transportation funding year cycle for us, and I believe the call for projects is going out in March. Is that correct, Mark? I was thinking countywide, but they're both going out about the same time. Okay. And I'm not sure Port Orchard is going to actively participate in that with projects, but we will actively participate in the scoring and the selection process, the award process for that. The other thing that we're working on this year is the center section of the countywide planning policies, the CPPs. And I would expect our council will see a ratification of the CPP sometime later this year, and then there will be a more extensive study next year, and we will probably in 2022 see the CPPs back. But those are our major work items this year, is transportation funding in the center section of the CPPs. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, the Peninsula RPTO. And I just wanted to let council know that one of the benefits of, for our participation in the Peninsula RPTO is that we have more of a hands-on role or engagement with the Department of Transportation and other metropolitan planning organizations, the other MPOs and the other RPTOs throughout the state. Without our membership in the regional, the Peninsula RPTO, our representation would basically be through PSRC and would probably be fairly much centric to the east side of Puget Sound. And this way, we have a more intimate role or hands-on role in some of the transportation elements that are being considered at the state level. And I had the privilege this morning of attending a quarterly coordination meeting of all the RTPOs and MPOs throughout the state, and I found that very educational and look forward to being able to continue to participate in those.
Wonderful, thanks for sharing.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
She's a little bit modest in that she was also, at the last PRTPO, elected to be the president of the PRTPO, so it's had at least a two-year term. So she is not only our representative, but she's chairing that group, so.
Thanks. Thank you for stepping up.
My pleasure.
All right, before I give my report, Jackie, do you have anything you want to share with us?
Are they all worth? Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do. I have the results of the rating that you just did on four different sources of water in our two water systems, and I would like to report at this time that McCormick Woods Well Field is the winner.
Which one was that?
I'm sorry?
What letter?
Number?
B.
B, awesome.
So, yeah, so we'll be going on entering McCormick Woods Well Field in the local contest to see if we can win at that level to go move on to the regional. So thank you very much for your time.
Senator Jackie, just for my, isn't that the shallow aqua for well that we need to abandon?
It is.
So that's our best water, and we can't have it. All right.
Out of curiosity, which one was the bottled?
Which was the bottom?
Bottled.
Oh, there was a...
I thought one of the samples was from the bottom.
No, I did throw a ring around on you, but it wasn't bottled water. I wouldn't serve you bottled water because I don't believe in it. But the bottom one was the tap in the Public Works Kitchen.
Was that A?
That was A.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was awful.
Yeah, it was. It had a bad taste.
It's a plumbing in City Hall. It's a plumbing in City Hall, yep. All right, see the mayor's report. So yesterday, we, Councilmember Lou Correlli, myself, and Kathleen Wilson from Kitsap Regional Library, and Matt Murphy from the Chamber of Commerce, visited Village Greens. It's not my first time to make that tour, but, you know, I found it interesting again. You know, they built that facility for less than $10 million, so I struggle with the scope. As we go through our process, I'm not sure how that, the number that was, that we've been awarded, but I'm hopeful we're going to be able to value, get a quality facility and value, do some value engineering to that. So it's a phenomenal facility. It does have the Boys and Girls Club, which I'm not convinced that's a good fit for the last third for our facility, but we got to process to determine that. And the library there is, what, about 6,000 square feet, and we currently have almost an 8,000-square-foot library, 7,500 or so, and they need 10,000 or more square feet. We have much more foot traffic. One of the interesting, I mean, they've got a, to help with people that live off the grid or are homeless, they've got a shower facility there, it's $2 that they charge for, and they've got a local number... It's $2 that they charge for, and they've got a local nonprofit that buys and blocks of vouchers, and they're giving out for that. And even if you don't have a voucher, you can come in and your power's out or whatever your need is. Got a very nice shower facility, private shower facility there. Basketball court and some other things that I don't think we would need, but overall, it's, it's a very good model for what it is, I see, hopefully in our future. So I went to the mayor's exchange, I think it was last week, time is a blur sometimes. And they're always good, and one of the best takeaways from it was the state's chief economist, economist, and if your name was Stephen Lurch, I mean, that just seems like an odd name for, for somebody who's dealing in economic forecasting, but anyway, that's his name. And he told us that the statewide construction sector is slowing. These economists too, it seems like whenever I hear them, they talk in circles, you know? I'm not sure if it's good or if it's bad, but consumer and business confidence has dipped, dipped but remain high. The Washington labor market has slowed but remains strong. I just wrote these things down as he said them. Inflation is modest. International trade remains uncertain. Uncertainty regarding the 737 MAX is concerning overall to the state. Our federal debt is the high, at the highest level per capita since World War II. Washington State continues to outperform the rest of the nation, and the overall economic forecast is for a slowing economy in our future. But he said the same thing last year, and the state and the city both had record years. So I think they, they're, they tend to be pessimists anyway, because if they overpromise, then they don't maybe have jobs, so. So I, some of the things that, and then there's this around the room of sharing ideas, and I've got mayor, other mayors around the state that do coffee or, you know, instead of town hall meetings, they do coff, go to a local coffee shop or a, a local establishment and have beer night. And so I, I thought those were unique ideas. Somewhat like Rotary, where we have a thought of the day, some mayors open with a thought of the day. And I thought that was interesting. To, you know, we meet with our delegation, you know, typically before the session and off-session, and I think next time, I think it's important, maybe we hop in the car and we drive them around, and, and some of them live here, but others don't. They live in Gig Harbor or other communities, and it's important to, to, to see, you know, some of our communities and some of our transportation needs. A rumors link on the webpage where people, and I read this on Facebook, you know, and they hear, you know? And I don't know, we don't have anybody to respond to the rumors, but I thought that was interesting. And I met with Jesse Young that afternoon. Nothing, I was, I was a little concerned. He, we have a number of bills that we're monitoring or in support of, and I had to educate him a little bit on why we were supporting in particular one of the economic development tools, and he wanted to know, well, if I, if we vote for that, are you gonna abolish impact fees? And I'm going, well, no, that's apples and oranges. And I kind of had to explain it to him, so I guess I'm glad I went down there. Back to my mayor's report. So we, today I received notice that we received our Well City Award again, and because of that, we get a 2% or $20,000 reduction to our healthcare premium. And those are their wellness activities, the survey that we, our employees do about their wellness activities. So thank you to Debbie Lund for the work that she does on that, our HR coordinator. The transportation budgets were released for the House and the Senate today, and I'm sad to say that the Sedgwick interchange projects that we've been advocating for, they have been in transportation packages, but the packages haven't moved forward. The transportation budgets did not have either one of those projects, or those projects in it. I read an article a couple of weeks ago about the county surplusing part of Veterans Park, and, and so I reached out to Commissioner Grito. She said she would coordinate a meeting with the county's parks person, but I haven't heard back from her. We've included that. I just made her aware. We're doing a park survey. If we're successful in some sort of a parks levy, I think we would gladly add that to our inventory. It has got a lot of deferred maintenance. I've driven up to it, but it is a big piece of property with a lot of opportunity, and we need more park space. So Community Service Day is scheduled for March 21st. Would love for you to participate. And we've been, Noah and I have been in discussions with IT, you know, we're, we've got this, our domain name is really long. It's cityofportorchard.us. And I, I believe what we're gonna do is change it to portorchard.gov. It's way shorter, and there's a process to do that. And then we would, those other emails would forward for a period of time, so we have time to get, you know, get, educate people, change business cards and things. But I, I think portorchard.gov is much more succinct and a lot less letters to type. So, and then Dick Brown's been talking to me quite a bit lately, and he wants to make a presentation to the city council about Growth Management Act, environmental regulations, and the effects they're having on the housing market. And I, I just, I, I appreciate what Dick does in our community, but I don't want that to be a bitch session, I guess. So I'm trying to, what it is that he wants us to try to solve, and I guess if he can formulate that, I think it probably would be more appropriate at the Land Use Committee versus a work study. I'm sorry, Scott, but I, I do believe though that, you know, we should give, but it's gotta be in, in something tangible that we're trying to resolve and not, because, I mean, we don't, the environmental regulations are coming top-down, and so is Growth Management Act from the state, so.
He's not very analytical in his concerns, and you've heard them.
No, I, trust me, I talk to him quite frequently.
One of the biggest things that he and one of his partners have advocated for is a cost-benefit analysis of any legislative change. And even that, as we talked about tonight, can be a big hurdle to try and overcome, so. Sure, we're happy to listen to him.
Okay, thank you. I will convey that message, but it's.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think a number of us have had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Brown about his concerns and issues, and from when I've talked with him, it's been a little bit different twist on the concerns, and it's more related to, you know, what, what some of the, for example, impact fees are doing to the ability to determine affordability in a house and what those kinds of things are costing on the development of homes. And he's also, most recently, talked about the, it's, I guess it's the market right now with real estate. Their inventory is quite short, which, welcome to the Puget Sound. I think that's an issue. But I think it'd be great to go to the, to the Land Use Committee, but I think there might be, if, if he could formulate his message and be more succinct in it and not be, as you refer to it as a bitch session, I think it might be of value for the whole council to hear, if in fact, but I would defer to the committee to.
To vet that and then bring that up.
Kind of vet it and see if he's got his act together such that it would be worth all of us listening to, so.
Yeah. And his concerns are related to that lack of inventory. We are, I mean, we've got a record number of applications in processes, so it's not. But he is concerned about the, the cost of housing and the way, the way it is skyrocketing.
From what my conversation, wasn't just targeted at the city of Port Orchard.
It is not at all. It's global.
Urban growth boundaries and not having to develop old ground, and there's a number of issues that I think we've all, were aware of, but if he could put it together in a, like I say, as a saying, message to where we can see better some of these impacts, I think it might be worth the time. But again, I defer to the committee to vet it first.
Okay, perfect. I will convey that message. That's it for my report. And we are to the directors, head of department heads. Mr. Dorsey, do you have anything to share?
I just wanted to share with the council that we're still working with KCR on our affordable sale, affordable housing contract. Again, recall last month, I brought back that we actually did receive some revenue in January of $5, so not big revenue. We expect to get some revenue here in the next couple of days from the state. So that will really be our first collection of that money. We're close on the contract. The one thing I talked with the director over there about is he wanted to confirm that council's comfortable with this program applying to all City of Port Orchard residents, not just seniors and veterans in the City of Port Orchard. When they brought forward their program materials, they focused on seniors and veterans, but I did not walk away that the council's intent was to limit our contributions to those particular groups.
I thought it was, but I'm not the council.
I thought it was the indigent, actually.
No, it was, no, it was, it's, it's a rental subsidy to keep people in, that, on fixed incomes in the, in their homes or rental property, yeah, that are, that gap is what. And then the focus of the presentation at least was.
Correct.
Veterans and seniors.
Seniors and veterans.
So was that our intent to limit it to that, or anyone that meets a certain income requirement?
I thought it was for the most at-risk.
Most at-risk, okay. Others? I don't have a vote.
I'm trying to remember, was there a certain amount that would be allocated per month? So that it wasn't all expended the first?
Yeah, there's a cap. There was a cap per person, if I recall.
Yeah, there's a cap per household of $2,000 per year.
And it's got, and Noah and I talked about too was versus them over, potentially overcommitting dollars, we're gonna take these dollars as we get them and hand them to them. We'll get them in a monthly basis, and then they know exactly what, how many dollars they have to spend. And then we're expecting periodically, they're gonna come back to the council, not names or anything, but, you know, these are who we're helping, and these are how many dollars that, you know, what the dollar program brought in and who, who they've helped. And I guess we have an opportu, this is a one-year contract. We have the ability annually to make course corrections to this.
And I'm remembering that they assume, the assumption was that that monthly amount would be used.
Yes, yes, mhm. Yeah, it's gonna be, every month, they're, they're gonna have, with, with caps to households. It's slightly less than 40,000, so it's a little more money than we thought it was, is what our estimate now is of those dollars. But until they start coming in, you know, we won't know exactly how many dollars.
I guess, I, you know, Councilman Deener said the most at-risk, and I'm remembering a conversation or the presentation that had to do with veterans and our senior citizens. And if we provide those two audiences money, then that would free up other money for the other people.
Within their existing, in their existing, they, they have a program that's just like this, that's countywide. And this program is only gonna be in the city, our dollars are only gonna be in the City of Port Orchard. So what, council member, I think what council member Ashby is saying here is, then if by us putting dollars into this Port Orchard pot, that they're gonna free up other dollars that can be used.
Help others.
To, you know, globally to help others in that same mission.
And just to clarify, when I said most at-risk, I meant seniors and veterans.
Okay.
So I did hear seniors and veterans by, by a couple. Is that?
I would just say I trust our partners with KCR to, to go through that, and I think the words most at-risk can change month to month depending on the application. So I don't know that I would, would limit it and tie their hands. I, I trust that they are there to, to go through that process, and like you said, it's a one-year contract, and I don't know why we need to put additional strings on it, but.
Okay, so I'm hiring anybody with a need, first come, first served.
Yeah, most at-risk, yeah.
As the dollar comes, dollars come in. Councilmember Clausen?
I guess I'm assuming, I agree, we need to trust our partners to administer, but I'm assuming that this isn't going to fix the entire problem, and that we have to prioritize who is going to, because we can't do it for everyone. And if we do have to prioritize it, then I think veterans and seniors would be, I, I guess, although I, I have some heartburn that if we're gonna, if a family with children are gonna be put out on the street.
That's my point, yeah.
Hope that they would be addressed before seniors.
Okay, sure.
And I are a senior, so I guess I could say that.
I'm hearing a mixed bag.
The program, the program that was presented to us, those were some of the criteria within the program.
Yeah.
So.
But this is our program. We can make it wherever we want it to be.
We would be changing the.
The criteria.
The criteria, okay.
Yeah, so I just want to read one statement in the Housing Solution Centers. These are guidelines for these funds to be used for senior or veteran. They're literally homeless. Street shelter placed not meant for habitation or fleeing domestic violence, or imminent risk of losing housing. So I think that's where we're capturing both.
Yeah.
And so as we're developing and drafting the contracts, again, I appreciate them reaching out and saying, hey, I just want to confirm you guys are comfortable with the approach of the program, and I want to reach back out to the council and confirm that as well.
Despite of that definition.
I would say after the first year, we'll have information and feedback, and we'll see where the money went, and then we can make that decision. But I think essentially that, what you just read covered everybody, plus with what council member Ashby said, it will free up dollars to impact other people. And it's a very small pot, we know that.
It is a small pot of money, and I think their program has a preference, as Charlie and I are talking, towards the seniors and veterans. So I just want to confirm council's support of that.
It'd be nice in that reporting when it came back that in those categories, how, how many, how many dollars and how many households we helped. That'd be the, I think for me, the most meaningful data, so that if we want to make a course correction, you know, we have data to support that.
Absolutely.
Great. So we are close. I think I will circle back with them tomorrow, update the draft we have, and then I will target March 10th as the contract approval date, if that's acceptable, if you'll.
Mr. Bond, do you have anything?
Yes, one announcement, and I'm seeking a little bit of feedback tonight. Tom Beckwith, our consultant who's doing the Parks Plan Update, is beginning to set up focus group meetings with various groups who use our parks. And he's got a list started of who he's going to go and talk to, and I want to make sure that it's complete by vetting it with you. Right now, we have the South Kitsap Boys and Girls Club, South Kitsap Little League, South Kitsap Soccer Club, Kitsap Youth Sports, South Kitsap Girls' Softball Association, Boy Scouts, Pee-wee soccer, and then we're also gonna meet with reps from the County Parks and Recreation Department, since they administer a lot of the programs. But beyond that, if there are any park user groups that you're aware of, you can tell me now or email me in the next couple of days. I will ask him to reach out to those groups to get their feedback as we continue updating the Parks Plan.
Did you have the Pee-wee's on there?
Yes, we did.
Pee-wee soccer, but not Pee-wee football.
Yeah, but Pee-wee football.
Oh, Pee-wee football, thank you.
And I would clarify it. It's South Kitsap Western Little League.
Okay. This is the one that's in the city.
Did you want to mention it? So there, I think the Moms Club is still an active club. I know that they're still sponsoring events, so I think they were.
Okay.
In the active club building?
Would they want it, with parks and stuff, would they want to hit any of the homeowners associations?
What about homeowners associations?
There's so many. I don't know, I don't know how you'd pick and choose which ones you talk to and which ones you don't.
We're gonna have a process to our citizens.
Right. That, that would, that would cover it, okay.
Globally.
If you think of anything in the next couple of days, please feel free to email me or carry it in my department.
Did you have the organizations that use the active club building?
We're thinking the same thing.
I, I just wrote down the active club. I heard somebody mention it, but.
If you touch base with Cindy and Kara. If you touch base with Cindy and Kara, they'll know who all the users are, there's a handful of them.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Charlie?
I have a question for Nick.
Okay.
What's going on with Stetson Heights? Or what's the status, I should say?
So, a few months ago, they hired a new contractor, Active Construction, who also built the Tremont Project, Active has been taking erosion control much more seriously than their previous contractor, and, but with the rain that we had in December, they still had some pretty large failures, they are working on it, and we're heading in, I think we're doing engineering review on their site improvements, and our goal this spring is really to, yes, we still have problems and we have things to mitigate, but we wanna make sure that they get their improvements in so that we don't have a repeat of this next winter, so our goal is, is to really do everything that is in our power to make sure that they can move forward in construction and have more permanent stabilization of the site by the end of summer when we're heading into the fall, and other than that, ecology is really taking the lead on enforcement, we, we still have some enforcement to do in our code related to mitigating the impacts from this winter's problems, but we're, we're sort of deferring to ecology on some of these issues because they have more stringent requirements than we do.
Thank you.
Would it, I, I know the, the development community will cry foul at this, but would it be prudent for us, there aren't any bonding requirements related to our build, our great, our grading, clearing and grading permits, and should we have some, so that when situations like this happen, if they walked away, we, we have something to grab?
There actually, we did adopt bonding requirements after Stetson Heights was approved, they, and on the most recent permit, we required them to put a bond in place, we don't have very well-defined policies in terms of how much of a bond is required, and I think following the lead of other jurisdictions in the county, it's either an engineer's estimate of what the erosion control measures cost, or it's a price per acre, but I think we need to look at the amounts that are, that are posted by developers more carefully and make sure that we have the tool that we need to achieve compliance in the future.
Thank you for that clarification, okay, sorry, Charlie?
Not a problem, nothing to report this evening.
Okay, Chief?
Nothing, I think I've said all that I need to say.
About half of, we got half of our meeting tonight, so.
Well, I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thanks for bringing everybody, that was great.
I'd like to make one comment on it, in my previous job, I got to interact with both of your, both folks, sergeant and detective, and they did fabulous job in support of the school district, so.
Excellent.
I really appreciate the work your, your folks are doing.
We do as well, thank you.
Brandy?
I have nothing to report either.
Okay, we are, I'm gonna take our next citizen comment period, and then we're going to go into an executive session with no action to be taken afterwards, the executive sessions relating to RCW 40.30.1101B, related to real estate, and 1I related to potential litigation, and I expect we'll be back there about 20 minutes with no action to be taken afterwards, and I may have to extend, but we'll start with 20 minutes. With that said, I will take citizen comment, and then we'll head into our executive session, so anyone wishing to address the council this evening, I'm here to listen, so you have three minutes, please step to the microphone and state your name for the record if you could.
Mayor, City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to come before our council requests considerations of current parking regulations.
Excuse me, sir, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Dennis Perkins, and I live at 800 block of DeKalb Street, and I've lived in this home since I was a child, which has been over 65 years in this community, and I appreciate again the opportunity to come before the council requests reconsideration of our current parking regulation, discuss the homeless issue that exists in our neighborhood. I'm here representing about 25 neighbors who live in the DeKalb, Harrison, and Dwight Streets, who have all been dealing with homeless issue within our neighborhood, this has been an ongoing problem for about a year, before working with the church was where this problem was taking place, every night we had five to nine cars parked in both the church and the parking lot in the city strip across the street on Harrison, as well as having individuals sleeping alongside the church, there have been, even been tents put up in the adjacent city park, while we are not insensitive to their plight and understand this is a complex issue, we have a duty and a responsibility to protect our neighborhood, we've been working with the leadership of the Capital Christian Church on the corner of DeKalb and Harrison in order to get the homeless to leave that slept on the church property, used drugs, loitered, dumped garbage all around the property and our neighborhood, this makes many of us feel unsafe and very frustrated in our otherwise peaceful neighborhood, major steps have been taken by the church in order to welcome the homeless to the services and activities they provide, and to request that they leave once the services are over, now that they can no longer live and trespass on the church property, some have moved right across the street into the four-hour parking strip on Harrison, many hours of our police, oh, I'd like to thank Sergeant Maine, by the way, 'cause she took leadership, was the point man on this, many hours of our police department resource has been spent by the neighbors calling in for different issues relating to this homeless issue, in early December, we were able to get, do a public information request to ask how many 911 calls have been made in the year 2018 compared to 2019, the information we were given was in 2018, there were four calls in the immediate area around the church, for 2019, as of early December, there had been already 34 responses by the neighbors, there have been many more calls made in the remainder of the month of December and January. Within the past couple of years, these parking spots across from the church were used mainly by PSNS workers who parked there and walked to the ferry, for some reason, that strip has changed to a four-hour parking zone, now it has become the new daily and nightly hangout spot for the homeless, they parked there all night, starting their loud engines, assuming to keep their cars warm, roaming around the neighborhood at all hours of the day and night, which makes us feel unsafe, our request to the council is to have new parking regulations implemented on this strip, most beneficial would be have it posted no overnight parking, if it were changed back to allow PSNS workers to park there during the day, this would eliminate the option of the homeless to spend their days there now that they can't stay on, since they can't stay on the church property, when we approached the Public Works Department about having parking changes to no overnight parking, they responded that due to the homeless lawsuit, they could not make this change, now while we understand that we have a role to play in the homeless issue, we also feel the city has a responsibility to protect all tax-paying homeowners and renters, since our government is, since our governor is making the homelessness issue his number-one priority, we feel the city also needs to step up and help by designating areas these folks can live in within the city, with current court cases and the police not being able to guide these folks away without having a designated area to go, or an available shelter, they are also helpless to correct the situation, we'd like to request a meeting with the applicable committee in order to request the no overnight parking to be posted in this area as to, in this area as well as whatever committee is assigned to working on the current homeless issue within our city, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and both of those issues will be with our Land Use Committee, and I know we have one discussion item related to the, it's homeless camps, isn't it, Nick, that we've just added today, so that, it is, I'm not sure when that land, that Land Use Committee meeting is March 2nd, over at the Department of Community Development, which is just around the corner here, at 9:30 in the morning. And if you've got an idea for how you would like the parking changed, it'd be nice to have that, you know, riding ahead of the meeting, and maybe if there's a, you know, a number of your neighbors that agree with that position, to maybe get them to sign a petition.
I don't think we'll have a problem with that.
Okay, love to hear from you.
Well, thank you.
You bet. Sir, would you like to address the council?
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity, my name's Nick Gorley, I live over in Anderson Hill in Old Clifton Row, and been a resident for 17 years in Washington State, I'm a transplant from California, courtesy of the US Navy, 13 years we've lived here in Port Orchard, and when it came to retire, decided this is where we wanna make our home, that's when we bought our first home, through that, and how that correlates is, I'm really here to talk about the $30 car tabs, and coming from California, $30, very inexpensive, I get that, what we're paying now, in my perception, in my, in my, of my opinion, is, was a drastic increase, 'cause back then, when we moved up here, car tabs were very inexpensive compared to California, another bonus for moving to Washington, so where I'm going with this is, the voters voted in November, and it's still in the courts, came to my attention this morning, looking at my little phone, the city of Wording has decided to go with their voters, and their citizens, and support their citizens, so I'm coming here, Mr. Mayor and City Council, to ask your support for the citizens to do the same, we, $30, do I understand, and, and let me back up a little, I attended the meeting in here tonight, and I thank you for that opportunity, I garnered a lot of information, and I understand that we're in modes of change, change, I like change in moderation, as most people do, the car tabs initiative has gone back and forth, and the way I look at it, from a perspective of a citizen, is if you broach me with an idea in a mediocre way, it's more acceptable from citizens to garner that, would it hurt me to pay more than $30? Absolutely not, for the things that we wanna go forward with, I understand development and, and such, and growth, I get that, but as a citizen, if it had been broached in advance, which, as I've learned here in Washington, the state of Washington likes to put things in front of us, and then we repeal them two years later, because they don't get approved through a voter, I'm, I'm a basic guy, I, but I can accept common sense and logic, so, not to get off on a tangent, but that's my, that's my, that's why I'm here, is to ask City Council and the mayor to support that, and hopefully we can move forward from that. Thank you on that, I'd like to sidestep with a couple of questions, one of the questions.
So we don't answer questions, it's, it's a citizen comment period.
Okay, okay, so, well, okay, I'll table the questions for later, but anyway, that's, that's my comments, and I appreciate it, and Mr. Chang, I know this guy adamantly, this is another, I'm not gonna blame you, you're one of the other reasons why I decided to stay in Port Orchard, because I remember when you were first made your way around my neighborhood, when you were running for City Council, that was an impact to me, because in all my life, you were the only one that's ever came to my door, whether I'm here or in California, that came to my door and stood, shook my hand, talked to me, and I appreciated that, and I thought that was great, so, thank you for your time, thank you for listening, and that, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments, so Charlie, I appreciate that, but I don't think we need, will need to take an emergency action, so, so I'm not, we're not intending, as I stated earlier, we're two executive session, one related to real estate, and the other potential litigation, and we'll step into the executive session with no action to be taken after the meeting. Brandy?